Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for North Rose Wolkett Central School. We'll be, I'll open the meeting and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We first need to approve the agenda. We, the board members have received in addition to the agenda, board members, do you all have that agenda, that addition? And I'm going to ask that we put it on now onto the agenda. But before we do that, because I know those of you, the rest of you don't have this agenda, this resolution, I'll read it to you so we know, so you'll know what we're adding. The resolution is to appoint a special education teacher, Rachel Strickland. And Christie Graves recommends Rachel Strickland to fill a special education teacher position. This is the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the four-year probationary appointment of Rachel Strickland as a special ed teacher, conditional upon a criminal history record check according to Commissioner's Regulation eighteen eighty-one point eleven and part eighty-seven as follows. Certification: Students with disabilities, grades one through six, professional. Tenure area: Special Education dash Generalist. Probationary period: November fifteen, twenty twenty-one through November fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Salary: Fifty thousand five hundred three, Step E. The expiration date is tentative and conditional only. In order to be eligible for and considered for tenure, the teacher must meet all requirements of the educational law and corresponding regulations. So I will ask for a motion, please, to add this resolution to the agenda and it would be placed at the end of our business, which would be following number five. Resolution which requires a roll call vote, I'll, I'll put it in there after that. Before the good news. So a motion, please, to add this resolution, Linda and and Izzata. Is there discussion or are questions concerning putting it on? All right then, all in favor, hands, please, give me time to make sure that I see them all. Thank you. That motion is carried. And so now, a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Jason and Paul. Discussion. All right, all in favor, hands. Thank you, that motion passes. This evening, this is our second board meeting of the month. And tonight, we have a presentation from our superintendent, Michael Pollan. A presentation on the capital improvement and a transportation recognition. So, Michael, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Before we begin with the official presentation, I'd just like to say to the Board of Education, thank you to all of you. You may have received your shadow box for the last work that you did to wrap up the capital project from twenty seventeen. Sign of our appreciation for all of your efforts, a little, little token of gratitude. So want to make sure that our public and our community understand how much we value your time and effort as Board of Education members. And it's just a small, like I said, a token of appreciation to say thank you for the, the number of hours that you volunteer and donate your time to our community to benefit our students. So thank you. I'm gonna get started right now, going through the presentation. Please let me know if you cannot see my screen. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna go into the presentation mode. So John Paul Payne and Sarah Ball are with us tonight also from SCI Group. So they're, they're members of the audience, but I want to bring to the board and our community attention of a project that we're hoping to pass on December sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. A capital improvement project that we're basically saying is really comes down to asset preservation for the district. And I hope that through tonight's presentation, you're gonna see some of the improvements that we're looking to make. You'll understand when I say asset preservation, this is really more about upgrading our facility in a way to keep intact everything that we currently own and make enhancements and improvements to bring our facilities up to to standard. So there you go, the front page of what we're looking to do. We're gonna start off with the high school. Many of the board members and community members know that last year during the winter, we ran into some inclement weather, high winds several times throughout the course of the winter season. That really exposed some deficiencies when it came down to our roof over the gymnasium at the high school and the wrestling room at the high school and a section of hallway and fitness center. So the picture at your upper right, you're gonna see a roof, a rubber membrane that I would say served its purpose. But it's, it's surpassed its life expectancy. That roof right there on my screen that the cursor's going over is thirty years old. You'll see several pockets of water that have collected over time that are just standing. So after a good rainstorm like we had earlier this week, that water just sits and collects until the wind takes it away or the sun dries it out. So it's, it's in dire need of improvement. We've got leaks that are taking place that we're going out constantly to patch. So this cost to replace this is something that really, to dip into our general fund would be cost prohibitive and really paralyze us from that standpoint. Also, the screenshot to the lower right hand is the mortar joints and masonry work outside of the gymnasium. You'll see there are several discolored pieces of mortar where that's actually the mortars failed. It's been replaced by caulk and you can't see it on the screen, but if you were to look at this, the water from the roof is actually getting behind the masonry and in several instances, the brickwork is bowing out. So part of our presentation under this project would be to replace the masonry to correct the issues there. Take the flashing, take the roof and also the, the mortar joints and the, the brickwork and repair those. Really bring it up to speed when it comes down to the surface underneath so that our athletic competitions and our phys ed classes can participate without interruption due to the, the potential slip hazard from water pooling on the hardwood surface below. Also at the high school, under this proposed project, you know, we're going to expand our alternative learning center that you may remember from the board tour in August. And we're going to dedicate some more space towards single point of access to the alternative learning center. And we're going to take some of the science rooms and convert them into a large group instruction space. And as part of that work, under the reconfiguration of that space, we're also trying to create a district office handicap accessible entrance and parking. It's a little bit closer for our mobility impaired community members. They have a hard time parking over in that side visitor lot and then walking up to the entrance. So that is some stuff that we hope to do as part of the project work at the high school. Additionally, our auditorium is no longer up to par when it comes down to performing arts center. So under this project, we would make this ADA compliant in terms of seating spaces and audio visual equipment to make sure that the seats are replaced, the carpet replaced, the backdrop, the screen there, and adding some acoustic panels so that our performing arts really are brought up to where they need to be to make, meet today's standard. That's part of the proposal. And then lastly, at the high school campus, some of our athletic facilities are in dire need of improvement. Again, you've heard a common theme in terms of accessibility and ADA compliant. Currently, our bleachers for our soccer facility are not ADA compliant. There are no cutouts for our wheelchair-bound community members to park and sit in a comfortable fashion. And in fact, there is actually no way for them to get up off from the playing surface so that they could sit up there with their, their friends and neighbors. So adding some handicap accessible bleachers, going ahead and taking care of the resurfacing of the high school track, which has served its purpose, has a lifespan of ten to twelve years. Currently, our track is at the twenty-year mark. And as you can see from the screens, some of the surface is starting to fail. We've, we've tried to maintain it as best we can, but now we're starting to get into the potential area of liability and hazards based on the surface failing. In addition to the surface for the track, you know, one of the things that we've heard consistently over and over again is there are no restrooms to accommodate our, our spectators. So under this proposed project, we would expand our concession stand. We would add restrooms and washrooms into a, a single structure component. And also, we would be looking to replace our press box and our dugouts that were donated by members of our community years ago and they, they've served their purpose. So that would be it for the high school. At the elementary, really, you've approved the capital outlay project that we're undertaking this year. And we've done it two years ago to replace sections of windows that are failing as well as bricks and masonry that are continuing to fail. Under that type of approach, it would take us about twenty years to replace all the windows and the masonry. And then by the time we got done under that approach, we would probably likely need to start over again in terms of efficiency and work product. So under this proposed project, we would go through in one fell swoop. We would replace sections of the window and masonry work that needed to be addressed all at one time. Outside the gym, that would include replacing the metal panels that you see on the screen to your lower right. They're starting to rust and buckle. And there are several instances where windows at that building in that gymnasium in particular are in need of replacement because they're double painted and one of the panes of glass is broken. Additionally, back to the roof structure, our maintenance facility, that roof, as you can see, is in dire need of being replaced. This picture over to the left is something that we saw last spring. After a rainstorm, the water is ponding, it's setting up over there. And that building itself is in very good structural shape. However, the roof needs to be replaced. And in fact, as you look at that lower right-hand screen image, you'll see that it's bubbling due to the fact that the material is starting to expand and dry. And in some cases, people in the past had put tires up there to add weight to it to keep it secured. So from our perspective, this really is a no-frills project. It's work that needs to be done. It's work that probably is something that was identified in the twenty fifteen building condition survey. But as you know, with Eleven Worth Project taking on a life of its own, it's stuff that right now for our maintenance department, it's hard for them to catch up and keep up. And for our asset preservation, we look to put forth a, a no-tax impact project to our community. Bring our facilities up to speed as to where they need to be. We feel like this project coupled with new capital effort in terms of asset preservation and facilities improvement, along with, I'm trying to think, I'm miss, I'm losing the word here, preventative maintenance, excuse me, with a new renewed sense of preventative maintenance, that this is gonna bring our other two buildings up to par with the Eleven Worth Project. The total proposal is going to be eleven point one million dollars. And again, we're gonna take a little more than three million out of our capital reserves to add toward this project. The remaining balance would be coming to us from state aid. And I know it's the first real look at everything from our perspective to the board and the community. But our capital project newsletter will probably go out in a couple of weeks to our community at large. We'll have more extensive pictures and a little bit more of an understanding of why the sense of urgency to get this in front of our community now, get it voted on and get us in the pipeline when it comes down to the state education department in terms of planning and getting the works scheduled. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. And I'm also willing to allow John Paul and Sarah to jump in as needed if I cannot answer that. Any questions?
Michael?
Yep.
It's by doing it this way, by going with a capital project, we get the state aid on that. If we were not to do it as a capital project, but more in a piecemeal kind of fashion, then it would come out of the general budget, which would then be subject to total finance by taxpayers.
Correct.
Correct?
That is correct. So right now, our approach would be to take advantage of the aid and take advantage of the capital reserve that we already have set up. And this approach has zero impact on the taxpayer. And it's something that is really a fiscally sound approach to this. Because again, you know, last fall, when we started to get estimates on the, the roof for the high school alone, we were told eight hundred thousand. And as you know, supply chain interruptions and cost of goods have escalated substantially since then. So we feel like to take a million dollars and replace a roof from the general fund really wouldn't be advantageous to the taxpayers. We think this approach would be a, a very sound approach.
Board members, anyone else have a question or comment? Paul?
Yeah, it says removal for the carpet in the auditorium for the high school. Is that remove and replace?
Yes, yeah. Right now, if you walked in and saw the aisleways, they're starting to show the seams and the threads are pulling up, which are trip hazards. We've done a great job of maintaining it, but it, it definitely would be replaced, very similar to what you saw in the auditorium of the Eleven Worth Building. You know, we would have lighting going down there and, and again, a new carpet. That, that would also entail some of the sound attenuation. Just the carpet dead and some of the noise there.
And, and if I could, one further question? Yeah, okay. And Mike, I think you, you, you alluded to this, but so we're not just using SCI estimates, but we've actually got some contractor estimates, not, not assigned contract, of course, but estimates as to the cost, because I, as you mentioned.
Yes, SCI and DJA Builders both have been working diligently on behalf of the district to take our, our ideas and what our real true needs are. They've been great. As I said, Sarah and John Paul are on the call with us tonight. They're, they're present. You know, they've toured the building several times. They've been on roofs. They've taken pictures. Sarah is actually, we've, we've entered into a contract early with her because during the twenty twenty-two school year, we have to do a, a facilities a plan already and submit, you know, in terms of the five-year rotation. So she's already started to do that. And she's probably, I would say, knows the building as well as our maintenance department, if not a little bit better, because she's been in all aspects of nooks and crannies that we have.
Yes, and for anyone's information, they're not the only ones who've been up on that roof, Michael. I understand you were up there and walking around too.
Yes, I've been up there a few times.
A board member who's chair of our buildings and grounds. So we're grateful that you made it back down without any mishaps.
Can I say one thing?
You let John.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I didn't realize John had his hand up. John, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to address the restrooms and the athletic field. I, I've, I've had the honor to go to a lot of games and having grandchildren playing this year. And a common theme I've heard is I, if I have to go to the bathroom, where, where do I go? And you have to leave the game and go all the way past the height, to the high school and go to the bathroom. Whereas other facilities, the bathrooms are much more convenient. So I'm glad, unless, Michael, you want to say something about that, I, I think for the general public, that's a great idea.
And I think, just to piggyback on that, it'll mean to interrupt you, but I think that that, again, from an asset preservation and a facilities improvement, a lot of things that we're trying to do really are bringing our facilities up to ADA compliance. It's not that our restrooms inside aren't ADA compliant, but for our mobility impaired community members to walk a hundred to a hundred and fifty yards, it's an inconvenience. And again, it's not something that, you know, we, we, we take a lot of pride in the fact that we, we put people in that position. So that is an enhancement that I would say is probably long overdue.
I agree.
Yeah.
And the same, the bleachers as well. I think they served their purpose years ago. But now, if you have a handicapped person with needing wheelchair at the cream, they have to sit on the grass. And I think that's a need that has to be addressed, that it must be addressed.
We agree.
Jason?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute and thank Michael. He did take me on a tour along with Mr. Bonville of the facilities. And the one thing that I wanted to say was, I was so impressed with the fact that the decisions in the areas that he's choosing for us or asking us to, to consider are for the long term. I heard so many times, like we've heard tonight, asset preservation and how it'll save the district money in the long term, combined with some routine maintenance procedures. And after touring the facilities and seeing everything that he pointed out this evening live that day, there was no question that this needs to be done. And, and like you said, it's, it's a no-frills, for the most part, capital improvement, but it's like putting new tires on your car before winter. You just know things are gonna go a lot smoother if you do it. So I had no qualms on any of that and seeing it in person really helped to solidify that it was the right, right decision for the district and our, and our community.
Yeah, I'm a firm believer that we're a fairly conservative community here at North Rose Wolkett. And we try to spend our money wisely, but when we build our buildings or we buy our homes, we take care of them. We, we do the maintenance because we know that in the long run, you save money by taking care of it. So I'm all in favor of moving forward with maintenance on these buildings and getting them up to speed where they should be.
Yeah, I think that from our perspective, like I said, Sarah's involvement with the building condition survey, having been here previously, John Paul's been here previously, they know our district, they understand the dynamics. They, they have seen firsthand the challenges that we're faced with. And, and I would say Pete Buckley from DJA Builders also meeting with the three of them and coming up with a scope of work that makes sense for our community. It doesn't burden our community, but really will address a large area of concern in a lot of ways. Again, from the windows and masonry at the elementary level, the metal panels and natural sunlight at the elementary building, the high school getting a resurfaced track, you'll know years ago, that was a marquee facility when it first went in. And, and you know, as much as they put maintenance into it, you know, again, it's doubled its expectancy, so it really is time to replace that. And then with the bleachers, the press box, the, the concession stands in the restroom, again, those are things that I think are, are well worth our time and our investment. And then on the inside, the performing arts will be great, the performing arts center, taking the auditorium from just a run-of-the-mill auditorium and, and making it a performing arts center and really giving our students and, and band and chorus and our musicals something to feel good about. I, I think that this group of people that we have working with us has really done a remarkable job of capturing it and doing it in a very cost-effective manner. So we're, we're excited by that. And later on tonight, you know, if the board sees fit, we'll pass a resolution to move forward with that proposed vote on December sixteenth. Any other questions regarding the facilities project?
Would go up for vote with the voters to approve.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna jump back into the screen real quick and I wanna, you know, go through another portion of a presentation, just a second. We have our transportation department that we would like to recognize tonight. And I wanna share with you something that, you know, it, it scares the heck out of us, but at the same point in time, you know, it just is really a testament to the high-quality professionals that we have working in our transportation department. Can you see my screen? Okay with this?
It's very little.
Okay, let me see if I can expand on that.
Oh, there, nice.
So I just want to take you back real quick to a couple of those things so that you understand the magnitude of what you're looking at. So this here, this video clip here from Lee Campbell's bus was last spring. You may recall, we said we had a close call and a communication, oh, sorry. Go back just a step further. This particular clip is heading down one oh four and Lee's actions really prevented one heck of a tragedy. So as you see, this U-Haul truck right here entered in his lane and they're not traveling at fifty-five miles an hour because they just passed this car right here. So as Mr. Campbell's progressing down Route one oh four, he's gotta make some split-second decisions because obviously he's got a, a busload of kids and, you know, he's got a You know, he's got a a commercial vehicle approaching him. You know, and that's something where hi- his split-second decision-making, where he he was accommodating. Going over the shoulder to keep those kids safe. And then when the bus or the commercial vehicle entered into that same space. He corrected just enough to get back into lane of travel. Um, really preventing what we we think would have been one heck of a tragedy. And this situation here with Robin is actually an incident from last week, and we wanted to. Highlight these two, not because we take great comfort in the fact that they occurred. But we wanna highlight the swift decision-making from our driver. So, at this point in the clip. Robin is stopped and she's getting ready to let a student off the bus. And you'll see that this other white commercial vehicle coming at her. Actually probably doesn't pay attention to what's happening and enters into her lane. And again, some split-second decision-making. She takes it into the um, yard of that student and really did a fantastic job, so. Uh, you know, my compliments to Lee and to Robin, my compliments to Jeremy and the entire transportation department. And we just felt like, based on what those drivers have done for us to keep our kids safe. And what they've do- what they do for us on a daily basis, they deserve some recognition, so.
Let's give them a clap, board. That's amazing.
It really is.
Very scary to look at, yeah.
It really is, but we we thought that that would be great to share with the board. And the community and just again, say thank you to our drivers for for being the professionals they are. You've often heard me say. In the middle of winter on a dark rural road, they have the most important job that, you know, to get our kids here safely. So, thank you. That's it for my portion, unless there are any questions.
Thank you very much. The board.
Kudos to, kudos to all our drivers.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a job most, most of us would never be able to handle or take on. Uh, it's a. A wonderful thing that they do with with not only being. The drivers in this and transporting our kids, but that they are. The first face that our kids see in the morning and. The last one at night in many cases, and they may, they can make or break a day for a child. And they make a day. That's really important, so thank you to all of them. Uh, we'll move on to our business. Um, the next thing is the consent agenda. A motion please to.
Public access, there was no one.
Thank you. I'm sorry, yes, public access. No one is has signed up, Tina?
No one reached out to me, no?
Alright, good. Well, I I guess that's good, because I wouldn't want them to think I was trying to snub them by moving out of the consent. But if people do wanna speak to the board, certainly, they need to contact you. Uh, so that you can get them into the Zoom and and uh, get them. To us in the public access time. Now, oh, Izetta?
Relating back to when Mike was talking about the capital project, and we're going to be sending out information to all our community. Um, keep, keep uh. Keep in mind when we do that, not all of our community has a Wocat address or North Rose address. And I know at one time, we corrected that so that those of us who in Red Creek or Butler or whatever. Still got the information, and I know for Red Creek, I'm not getting the information from the Wocat School anymore. So, I'm wondering if someplace along the line, some of our mailing. Addresses, whatever we were doing, has disappeared for some reason.
I'm not sure, because I know I went down and met with the postmaster. Um, last year to to address that, because I know that's something Cindy had brought up, but that's something we certainly will make sure. That all addresses and zip codes under our uh, district are receiving that for sure.
Well, I usually know what's coming out because I get Red Creek's. And ours usually follows suit, and this year, I I got nothing from Wocat.
Okay.
And so, I'm thinking there's something in the glitches someplace.
I'll check on it too.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up, Izetta.
Okay, I thought maybe if I brought it up between things, it would kind of move along.
I'm sure it will. Um, and now, a motion please to approve the consent agenda. Uh, John and Linda. Um. Discussion and discussion on the consent agenda. That goes through page five at the top. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Uh, motion is carried, thank you. Now, we're at number five on page five. Um, a motion to approve the capital improvement project. Uh, proposition uh, before you. A motion? Tina and Jason? Discussion. You just heard all about it uh, with the uh, presentation. But if you have other questions or concerns before we vote? Alright, then, all in favor of approving the capital improvement project?
Yeah, it's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, my fault, sorry.
Cindy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is carried.
Thank you. And now, we move to the um, resolution that we added to the agenda. Um, a motion please uh, to approve the appointment of the special ed teacher, Rachel Strickland. Uh, Linda and Paul? A discussion. All in favor? Uh, motion is carried, thank you. We come now to the good news part of our. Agenda. Uh, does anyone have? Anything they'd like to uh, bring forth? Tina, do you want to um, just tell what's gonna happen, what you're heading up on Saturday? That's good news.
I just wasn't sure which Tina. Uh, on Saturday, the Board of Ed will be present at the trunk-or-treat event. That is being hosted by the Cougar Pride Parents Committee or Parent Group. It's at Marshall Park from three to six, and anyone that wants to bring their children are more than welcome. There's also a food truck gonna be there.
Okay.
It it sounds like the group has really put a lot of work into this. So, I'm I'm hoping that despite the weather, that it's still successful.
And you said they take donations and the donations go to?
It's to, they're taking food donations. I'm not sure, I think the coop, that group does. Food baskets, so it's something that's gonna be self-supporting for them.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, Paul?
Yeah, Cindy, um, I don't, I, Christie, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but I. I know that we have the Fall Fun Days Parade right on tomorrow. And we're invited as board members, but could you just, I I've never been to one of those. Could you help me out a little bit on that?
Well, it's it's kind of new. Um, we are, our students love to dress up for Halloween, and so. Last year, we didn't really get to celebrate much um, because of COVID, so we just came back bigger and better. And this year, we're gonna actually let them parade outside, so they're dressing up. And we will be parading outside starting at two o'clock, and I'm sure it's gonna be very, very cute.
So, if we come with our costumes?
You don't have to. You can just come and see, but if you wanna join the parade, you can too.
Okay. Uh. And it looks like Veterans Day is a. A busy day at North Row Central with special programs at all buildings at different times of the day. So, uh, again, the board is invited uh, to attend those. Um, I think you need to get us, Tina, the time of the middle school program, okay?
I didn't have, that wasn't available at the time, they didn't have it today, so as soon as I get it, I will let, I will certainly let you know.
Alright, good, thank you. Um, and. Under good news, uh, we do, the board wants to thank. Uh, Michael and Tina and the people who put together the shadow boxes. Um, that contain those uh, dangerous, sharp scissors. Uh, that we cut the ribbons. Ah, Paul's got his handy. Um, that was really very nice. Uh, and um, I thought, well, if I ever have an emergency that I need scissors, I can break the glass. And there are the scissors, right, so. Uh, but thank you, we do appreciate it very much. Um. We didn't have any uh, board members that got to me ahead of time uh, with something they wanted to talk about. Um, and so that uh, completes our agenda. Um, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Izetta and Tina. Uh, discussion. All in favor? And motion is carried. Thank you.